Jane.
Hello.
Go Bible we were like.
That's okay. Yeah, we didn't.
Good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to Committee of the Whole Meeting. We are in the upstairs chamber of Town Hall. Because there's no heat down in the regular chambers. It's Tuesday, December the second, twenty twenty five, and it's five o'clock in the afternoon. This is our second meeting of the day. So we'll call this to order and I'll turn it over to Madame.
Thank you. We are guests on the shared traditional land of the Hodanashoni and Anishanabi people, where they built their homes and raised their families. We appreciate these lands for the food, water, air, plants, trees, and medicines they give us. We value the land by swimming and boating, working, camping, and exploring the forests.
Thank you so much, Councilor Cardy, and thank you to the kids. And number two is the adoption of the agenda is moved by Councilor Cardy, seconded by Councilor Aragona, that the agenda for the Committee of the Whole Meeting held on December the second, twenty twenty five, be adopted as presented. Call a question? Is that correct?
Sorry, through you, Madam Mayor. It was amended to add on a briefing note from Public Works regarding the, so that's why it says amended. It should say.
It says as presented, but as amended would be. They were on the same page. So the mover and second order is going to change that to amended. So let me get the speed camera. No. Briefing note on. All right, I'll call that question. All in favor, carried. The declarations of conflict or pecuniary interest. Seeing none, we're at our delegations. We've got some great friends with us today. To talk about every kid in our community. So presentation I've heard many times, but not by you guys, not by Jane. So welcome back to Westport.
Thank you. Nice to be here.
Union. It's good to see everybody.
And you don't share any?
Sharon, of course.
Yeah, who's the my compatriot in Lanark. And so what I've been doing throughout Leeds and Grenville is presenting to all the municipal councils. And then she's going to do it in Lanark County, because last year Lanark County started doing the Asset Builder Awards as well. Two years ago in Leeds Grenville, we had a whole lot of last, a number of Lanark nominations. So we didn't award them in Leeds Grenville, but we let them do them in Lanark, and they did it for the first time this past year, so.
And this wouldn't have been the first time you bumped into Sharon. No.
I know.
Yeah, well, welcome. Thank you very much. Important. And any opportunity we have to reinforce this program in Westport. This was one of the programs that four years ago, when we had all the social service programs come in and take a turn at Committee of the Whole and brief us. Unfortunately, my comments at the time were, you know, we don't see it in Westport. So we're excited to hear the update, and hopefully there are kids, because we have many kids in this community. Okay, go ahead, Jane.
So just one thing, just to note at the beginning, is that we do now have a new logo, which I didn't have at the time I sent you the slides. So it's a much more fresh. Kidlike logo, so that will be, this will be updated with that. And so this is our Start With Hello campaign, and you can go to the next slide, please. And you start with hello to build positive relationships, and that's what we want to do with our Start With Hello campaign. Why? Because it makes a difference in kids' lives. And we know if we make a difference in children and youth's lives in our municipalities and our communities, they're going to come back to our community and work and, you know, pay taxes and all those things that all municipalities really like to do. And as, and probably Robin knows that I can tag paying taxes to breastfeeding as well, you know, from my old days.
That's another story for you, but it's a good one.
So the, so the point being, if you make kids feel included, valued, and welcomed in your community as youth, then they are more apt to either stay or come back as adults. It was developed from the Sandy Hook Promise. And it's for all adults and influencers of youth in our community. We want environments where kids are safe, included, valued, connected. And it uses the developmental framework, which is listed there as well. Bit hard to read at some points in time. So express care, challenge growth, provide support, share power, expand possibilities, social emotional competence, academic outcomes, and thriving, other thriving indicators. So that's kind of what those are, those developmental relationship frameworks. So this is an old survey, because this is twenty eighteen. We did this at the Stingers thing in Brockville. The health unit did it at the time, and it was the voice of youth. So what do they want? And we don't think it's any different today. You know, make conversation with us, confident people, just start convos. More places for youth to go where they're welcomed. People talk to you about anything. Try harder to make youth involved, because they're going to be ruling the city after the grownups pass. I love that. Give kids at my age a chance and have faith in us, and we won't disappoint you. So that's the Let's Talk survey from back then. And we adapted this for all adults and influence of youth. And we align to the areas of focus for every kid of positive and caring adult relationships and community values, all children and youth. And we know statistically that people need, young people need to be surrounded by three or more non-parent adults who love, care, or appreciate them. And that's from the Search Institute where the developmental assets framework is from, and there's lots of evidence and research from the, on that at the Search Institute. What are assets? The terms comes from the developmental assets framework, as I mentioned. Evidence based from the Search Institute, and those are the positive experience, skills, opportunities, qualities, and values that kids need to succeed. So there are internal and external assets. The external ones are support, empowerment, boundaries and expectations, constructive use of time. And you can think about a lot of the things that you do in your municipality would fit into those external assets. Internal, their commitment to learning, feeling having positive values, their social competency, and having a positive identity about themselves. More is better. Research shows us that the more young, the assets that young people have, the less likely there are, they are to get into risky behavior and more likely to thrive. So more assets, kids do well in school, they're civically engaged, they value diversity. And then research shows that kids who have less assets are, you know, ones that do get into alcohol use, violence, illicit drug use, and sexual activity. So basically, the concept is the more assets, the better. So what we started a number of years ago is, it was well before COVID, because COVID is our timeline, isn't it, for everything? And we do asset builder events. And we've done them for, I think we're at ten years for Leeds and Grenville, where we allow anyone in the community to nominate someone who's an asset builder for a child and youth in their community. So we've had really interesting ones. McDonald's in Prescott near the high school. There's a, this, this past year, we had a guy at the, the new rink in Prescott as well. And he has a, I don't know, a gift shop or a tuck shop kind of idea. And there was a young girl about nine who was making bracelets, the braided bracelets, and he let her sell them in his store. And then kind of coached her on how to market and how to sell her, her bracelets and got them into other stores in Prescott. So, you know, and that would not have ever been part of his job at all, as even in doing his job at the, at the, at the rink. But that, those are some of them. And we had quite a number of asset builders this year. And they, and then Lanark this year, you had ten?
Eight.
Eight. And those presentations were done at Lanark County Council as well. So we think that Lanark will grow as well. One of them, those of you who've driven Smith through Smith Falls, the guy that's the crossing guard, and he waves, he was one of the asset builders who was, who received an award this year too. I think he's retired, since retired as well. But, you know, just so people who do things that, you know, like they, they aren't necessarily part of a big group, it might be that just kind of seeming to them inconsequential kind of thing that they do, and they make an impact on the child or youth. And then throughout those, the year twenty twenty five, I've been to now all thirteen municipalities in Leeds and Grenville to do this presentation to talk about.
We're the most fun, Jane.
Yeah.
Definitely.
Yeah, to talk about the asset builders and, and where we want to go from here. So getting ready to start with hello, I mean, heart, start with hello can go anytime. There's buttons. And these were made in cooperation with Developmental Services of Leeds and Grenville. So all of their clients helped us make the buttons. The health unit printed the material and we purchased the buttons. So that's available and for you to have in your community, if you would think to, you'd want to take on a Start With Hello campaign at some point around children and youth. So there are resources available on the Every Kid website as well. There.
Yeah, don't. Are you going to explain how to do that? Is that what your next slides are going to be?
No.
Okay, keep back a slide then. So take a community like Westport, what do we do?
Well, I think it's kind of, there's a couple of things that you could do. If you wanted to do Start With Hello, you could talk to me and I'd come and help you do it. And we could provide materials for you, maybe not the button things themselves, because they actually cost some money, but the, you know, the manpower from Developmental Services to get those kinds of things made. There's a roll-up banner that you could have in your community. You could announce it through your municipal website and say, we support kids and youth. And, and you could do it, you know, you could choose a month, or you could do whatever you wanted kind of thing, but just to say, you know, kids and youth are important to us in, in Westport.
So could. No, I'll remember. You go.
Okay. Just, I, I was wondering if there's any relationships with schools in the communities, because we're lucky enough to have two schools in the village that, you know, we could reach out. I don't know, we could go ahead and do a read aloud, something, be, be.
There's no, certainly the, all the school, the school boards, the four school boards that serve Leeds and Grenville do sit on the Every Kid in Our Community Coalition. But as far as a relationship around Start With Hello and the, the Asset Builders Award, not anything that we have developed with them particularly.
Barry has an idea.
Yep. I mean, so I think that's the, the idea is this is an idea. What do you think you could do with it, or what would you want to do with it? And some municipalities didn't want to do anything with it. Some had some quite cool ideas, like Augusta, there was actually an award or amount of money out from, I think it was from Hydro, to have a, a youth council, you know, so looking at that and supporting that. So maybe if we could leave, like, the Start With Hello campaign just for a second, I'll go on a little bit further, and then maybe I'll.
Okay, but for our team here. So we have a couple of things that happen, like, every, every week, we have shinny hockey, tons of young kids at it. But FOTA also runs Family Day every year. And lots and lots of young kids go to that. So there's a venue.
Yep.
Yeah, that we could do something at, that doesn't have to be high-tech, but it could kick the door open, and that's in two months or three months, whatever. So just think about that team.
That sounds really interesting, you know, and so, you know, it is that, you know, so they say the kid, and I, maybe it isn't an issue in Westport, but in some municipalities and communities it is. You see a kid walking down the street with a hoodie up, and you walk across the street, so you don't, and you don't stop and stay, say hello. So what we want with Start With Hello is that any kid you're going to see, you're going to stop, say hi, engage. It's, it's just a simple, hello, how are you? How's your day going kind of thing? And they kind of look at you a little bit weird at the beginning, and then, you know, somebody talked to me rather than that crossing the street to avoid, you know, in particular teenagers, I mean, kids, little kids are easier to interact with for sure, but teenagers can be somewhat off-putting to some people in a community. But it's not just for the people that work in social services, and that's why I'm talking to municipalities, because we want to broaden it to beyond that social service sector, so that everybody in the community thinks kids are great and love having them in your community. Okay?
Thanks, Jane.
We, we have a breaking the ice card. I don't have any with me today. I have to get some more from the health unit. So it's just some ideas for people who don't know how to keep, speak to children and youth. Give them some ideas of what to say and those kinds of things. So I, we can certainly provide those as well. And basically, what we want long-term, and why I'm coming to municipalities, was we want the developmental assets to be embedded into every aspect of life in your municipality. And, you know, how can we work with you as a municipality and build that into your municipal plans? Now, to that effect, and I'll send you this electronically, we've developed, and this is for both Lanark and for Leeds and Grenville. It came from the Healthy Communities Partnership. It started at the health unit, but we've adopted it and now have the ability to update and adapt. And it's basically looking at building developmental assets to foster resilience in mental health, mental wellbeing, and children and youth in your community. So it talks, there's some current statistics, some are a little bolder. We didn't oversample at the health unit this year for the school drug survey thing, so that's, it's Ontario one. Idea, data for some of it. And then what are some of the issues that we're seeing in Leeds Grenville and Lanark around children and youth? The longitudinal changes from twenty nineteen to twenty twenty-three in the, in that longitudinal survey of children and youth. And then the developmental asset framework. And then it goes into, these are some strategies that you as a municipality can, can use. And then if you work with your planner, is there a way to work it into your municipal plan similar to how you work built environment and climate change? And not that we don't think that you or any other municipality isn't working with children and youth or doing it, but this gives it that intentionality and where it's written down, and it's something visible for everyone to see when it's written into a municipal plan. So there are five strategies that you could add. One of them is give youth a voice, and I'll leave this copy with you. Celebrate and recognize youth's success, provide and support opportunities for youth to connect with youth. Provide and support opportunities for youth to connect with community members, citizens, and to celebrate the community asset builders. So we'll be putting out a call for the asset builders again in the spring. We'll do, I think our date is late May or early June, so it'll go out prior to that, and we'll send that to all the municipal councils. And you can nominate people from your municipality. Some people that you think are the, maybe the ones that wouldn't be known or recognized kind of globally. And then we do, we've been doing that at the YMCA in Brockville for the last number of years, and then we are also, they're also going to do it for Lanark in a similar timeframe. I think they'll all come in together. I mean, so there is a possibility, if it's easier for someone from this area to drive to, you know, Perth or somewhere for their receipt of their reward, we can work that out as well. So this is something that we've developed. We're going to keep updating. I know that provincially, the child and youth panels are very interested in it. And again, we would, I'm here to help support your planner or you or whoever, develop something around Start With Hello, and then work this into a municipal plan, if that's something that you're interested in doing. And would you like it? I'll leave it to.
I'll take it.
And I will email it to you, because it's, it's pretty, pretty new, pretty fresh. And I think.
Goodbye. Hello? Goodbye. That's the crapper. Go ahead.
Yeah, I think one of the things municipalities the size of ours can do is even get a handle on what is going on in our community that's related to, I like, for example, the intergenerational after our school, I just heard WSL, actually, the Westport Senior Living Group in town is starting a Grand Pals program, which is a provincial-wide, interesting pairing of clusters of kids with seniors. But, so there's a lot, there's a lot of this stuff happening. Sometimes we don't even know what's happening, which is, or to Council Cards questions about schools, like, obviously, there's lots going on with our schools, kids and connection to this little community, but can we, is there, is it a good expectation to try and package it in a theme? And sometimes there is, you know, when you can get a bit of a leadership for, of, and buttons and things that make it seem like it's part of a bigger whole.
Yeah, and I think that's, that's kind of the idea as well, because, and we, you know, we certainly, when we, you know, we provide a toolkit, we know you're doing many, many of those things, and many municipalities are. But I don't know that there's that intentionality always.
Yeah, yeah, more one-offs. Yeah. You're getting. Okay, anybody else questions? All right, that's exciting. Thank you so much for coming. I appreciate it. And we'll be talking about it.
Okay, and, you know, please reach out to me. My contact information is at the end of the slide deck. And, yeah, connected as well, of course. And, you know, I'm, you know, I don't work a lot of hours a week, but I have lots of spare time to.
Is this through the health unit?
No. I'm hired through Children's Mental Health of Leeds and Grenville. It's, I'm fourteen hours a week, as is Sharon. She's hired through Open Doors. And it's kind of that mental health, I forget, there's a name for the dollars. And it's through the Ministry of Children, Community, and Social Services that the money comes from to pay us. But certainly, the health unit has always been a fabulous partner with the changes that are happening at the health unit right now.
Following that?
Oh, I am, as you can probably imagine. They backed off, they, they have, I mean, originally, when Every Kid in Our Community started in Leeds and Grenville, before it started even in Lanark, it was the health unit, me, Social Services, Lanark, Leeds and Grenville, United Counties, and Keith McPhee from the Catholic District School Board. And it was the three of us that said, we need to be together on talking about kids and youth and not just all doing our own thing. And so the health unit's always been a great backbone support, so that, you know, to create the logo, that's Susan Healy. Create the toolkit, that's been the graphics, Jody at the health unit. So I'm fearful that we won't have those supports as we move forward, so I'm trying hard to main, work at maintaining those.
That's helpful for the next board meeting. Thank you.
Yeah, and I, and I'm reaching out to Lena, and I'm going to have a meeting with her, because she came after we were already doing this, these things, and it, you know, kind of the, the history of it. I mean, it was two thousand and two that I started this.
So Richard Kidd is the board member for Lanark. So we have a big meeting next week, right? You know, if you're following along, you know that, that we thought that it was going one direction, and so we have to make sure that it goes in that direction. So this sort of on-the-ground information is just helpful. That's all.
Yeah, and, and that, you know, it, it, because it is a coalition of the willing, we don't have other than fourteen hours of myself and Sharon paid support, so that background support of the health unit. And, and that's not just locally. That's, I was on a provincial meeting with the Child and Youth Planning Tables yesterday. And there was a public health nurse there from Perry Sound, and, you know, the city of Toronto is working on ACES. I think you remember ACES from when we presented at County Council one time. And how that kind of impacts on everything as well. So there's lots of significant public health support to planning tables throughout the province.
Yeah.
So if you ever have, need any more update, like, could be in call?
Thank you. I may be in touch.
I, I am, I am watching the news.
You watch the video?
No.
Yeah, it's online.
Oh, is it?
Just go to the website and you'll find the whole. The whole shooting night.
The, the other piece of, just one more second, just around the community safety wellbeing plans. And that's one of the things that the planning councils around the province are, you know, how are those things happening in the communities, and how do they connect to the, the Child and Youth Service Tables type of thing? So and I know you were instrumental in the most recent Community Safety Wellbeing Plan, but where is it and where's it going? A lot of them are starting to kind of rise up again and, and have some legs. So I don't know if there's any any, any thought on that as well, either you might want to.
There are many thoughts on it.
Started working group for Lanark County.
And you've got Jane involved, is that?
No, no, no. It's, it's coming out of the crisis in Perth, and, well, I shouldn't say crisis, but the situation occurred. So there was running in Perth only, and now they've asked it at Kandywide.
Oh.
So, yeah, so just started.
Yeah, they've always led the path there. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And I think that, you know, those quote situation tables, you know, I think.
Our souls kind of going forward.
On the situation table.
There is a situation table in Leeds Grenville. It's just not as active.
Okay.
But there, there is.
Great to know. Thank you, ladies. Good visiting, for sure. Thank you. All righty, so that was, well, put our heads together to see what we can do. Sorry about the stairs. Okay, so that takes us to number six, which is, six point one is the Recreation Master Plan. And moved by Councilor Aragona, seconded by Councilor Cardy, that Committee of the Whole received the report entitled Administration Recreation Master Plan for Information Purposes. So for people online, if you didn't read it, this is an important, maybe the CEO, can you give a cool notes on why having a master plan is so important, as a recreation master plan?
Yep. Thank you through you, Madam Mayor. In conjunction with FOTA, we explored applying for, at the time it's called Community Sport and Recreation Fund. It was a grant that's available for municipalities. And we talked to the ministry administering this grant. We looked at the parameters and the criteria. And collectively, we found that there was a gap in the data that we have. Which means that something like Recreation Master Plans and Strategic Plans, there's a number of different plans. You can have servicing utility plans. If you are, if you have a Recreation Master Plan, it can be a very strong basis for a successful application to these grants. And so at that point in time, and due to the gap in the data that we, that we had, we decided not to move forward with the application, because in consultation with the ministry and with later the City of London, who were successful for a complete rebuild of a second ice pad, they just further confirmed that having a Recreation Master Plan up to date and the public consultation that goes into this document is really the backbone of successful application for not only this grant, but for any other like facilities grants or data-driven grants that may come up in future. And so this is not seeking approval to pursue a rec master plan. It's to really direct staff to continue to work with FOTA, but to bring it to the twenty twenty-six budget deliberations if, if council sees fit.
Yeah, okay, that was really helpful. Thank you. And, you know, what, what the, the point is, we know that most of these things need to be grant-funded. But, you know, we don't want to go, what's that expression? Don't go to a gunfight with a knife or whatever that is, you know, you got, yeah, whatever. You think I did that right?
Take a sword.
Anyway, quite well said. I've got Councilor Cardy and then Councilor Crapper.
So with this Recreation Master Plan, it's just solely the arena? Like, it wouldn't encompass like the Lockwood Field or, or any other areas within the village? Go ahead. Thank you through you, Madam Mayor. It would include everything. So it would include things from the arena, programming, consultation with seniors and their programming, the harbor, everything, everything recreation.
That's good. The Council Crapper and then Councilor Aragona.
The briefing note was a bit vague on, but it seemed like there was potential in partnering with FOTA on some of the dollars that could be needed to do the plan. Is that a possibility that there may be opportunities to look at getting a master plan without council freeing up thirty-four thousand dollars in the budget?
Go ahead, CEO.
Thank you through you, Madam Mayor. That's, that's precisely the impetus on why we're bringing it forward, because FOTA showed an interest in assisting with this Recreation Master Plan to position them better in conjunction with the village to apply for a grant that would see the expansion of the arena to.
I get that, but in relation, in the, in terms of funding the the study itself, if we were looking at needing to come up with thirty-four grand in this year's budget, is, is the cost sharing of that an option for us to be exploring with FOTA?
Oh, yes.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah. Councilor Aragona, you're good, Councilor Crapper, Councilor Aragona.
Just had a question through you, Madam Mayor, to Chris, in terms of timing, is, is this happening? I know it's coming to twenty-six, but is the idea to have the plan in place by the end of twenty-six, and so that it's there for, if you need it for funding, or what's the timing line?
Yeah, through you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, it would depend how long it takes to gather all the data, but yeah, the sooner we could get it in place, the more valuable it would be, not only for grant applications, but just for future direction of programming in the village itself, whether it be for youth or seniors or whatever, and wherever as well. So yeah, I would say, you know, we want them to be thorough and gather the data that they need to come up with a comprehensive plan, but it would be very useful to have as soon as possible to direct many future.
I see some synergies. I see some synergies there, but with the presentation that we just had from the delegation about youth, right? I'm wondering if there's a connection there that we can somehow build in. Not sure if that fits into what you were thinking, but I just think that there's a, there's an opportunity there, especially for her strategic plan number two. In that plan that she was referring to, there's a ability to engage and recognize youth's contribution. So I think that might be something that could fit into this quite nicely.
Good thinking. Councilor Card.
Yeah, with my photo hat on, not my counselor's hat. In conjunction with the village, we've asked the CEO to go out and look at possibilities for somebody to conduct this and develop this recreational plan. And she's put a lot of work into it, and the first, the first general plan we got back was quite expensive, and, and the CEO pursued it further, and she actually secured a, a price that was about twenty thousand dollars cheaper. And FODA, we're not stingy with our money. We like to see it do good things, and we've come to realize as a group that for us to realize our goal of turning the community center, the rink into a community center with to cover the complete demographic in the village of Westport, provide services for everybody, that these are, in this modern world, these are just things that have to happen. And I, it'll come up at the next photo meeting, but theoretically, the members and directors are on board. And as far as the financing goes, it, it wouldn't be minimal if we participate. That'll come up, and we'll negotiate with, with staff and try to arrive at something that works for everybody, something that we can afford and the village can afford. So we're looking forward to the discussion.
Just like to follow up on one of your points, that this is what we have to do in the modern world, because there may well be people in the community that are saying, you're spending how much to do what? But, you know, this is just the reality. Um, but you know, this is just the reality of the world we live in, that if we're gonna compete for uh government dollars for grants. Um, uh we, uh there is there also not a piece of this uh to other Chris or Kim that looks at the user, who the users are? And so, you know, when we we hear regularly from people in the village that the percentage of people using the uh WTC Communication Center who live in the village is few and far between versus people from the townships. We're we're happy to have the township people there, but we carry the weight of the of the capital and the and the repairs. So that's a an important piece to me as well. So thank you for wording it the way you did. It's just in these days, that's what we need to do. Councillor Crapper.
And other, you know, the the delegation asked about our planner and you know, we don't have staff people doing that. Other municipalities would. So uh data is everything. And if you don't have data, you don't get money.
Yeah.
So in this case, we're purchasing the data.
Yeah.
Instead of having a planner on staff.
Yeah, good point. Okay, so everybody's satisfied with that? I guess we'll wait with the bated breath for uh FOTA's next meeting and then that'll give us an idea when we go to twenty twenty six budget, what we need. So I'm gonna call a question. All in favor, Carrie. Alright, uh next is six point two. Which is uh, oh, the policy, right, use of public property policy addendum. So that motion is moved by councillor Carty, seconded by councillor Aragona. The committee the whole received the report entitled Administration Use of Public Property Policy Addendum. And the committee the whole recommends that council pass a bylaw to regulate the use of public property. Uh, lots of amendments were suggested. Uh, are you satisfied yet? Uh, go ahead. Uh, I'll put a councillor Aragona, councillor Crapper.
Yeah, my my main issue has been addressed in in terms of the the wording of the uh section four. Uh, it is more specific and the definition that's been added addresses the ambiguity that I thought was there. So I'm I'm comfortable with what we've done with it.
Okay, thank you, sir. Councillor Crapper.
I still struggle. In the briefing note, it describes the problem as being camping. It would seem so much more direct to me to address that issue by having signage that says no camping and apply penalties. People are camping. Whereas the loitering, as it may be reducing ambiguity, but I picture the old, old guy, anybody wandering into the park to sit at the Senate tap and reflect on uh whatever at uh midnight. As people like me might do. And so they'd be loitering, according to this definition. So it isn't a rock solid, you know, no matter how hard we try, it the concept of loitering is vague and could be misinterpreted and but primarily my issue is if the problem we're trying to solve is camping, why don't we solve that problem by signage? And a rule about camping and see what other uh like we have lots of public properties of vandalism. So like we've talked about cameras, that would be a reasonable although problematic, but uh a way of addressing perhaps more directly the problem of vandalism on specific parts of our properties. So that's where I'm, where my head is at with it at the moment.
Councillor Carty and then councillor Carty.
Yeah, I was just um inquiring about signage for sure. Um, you know, like no camping, the the times of use, right? If I think loitering, we all, the term is there now, but if we see someone just pondering life some night, then that that's a different story than someone who is maybe not just sitting there pondering life every night and there's maybe some damage to the Senate tab. There there needs to be a little bit of common sense, I think, maybe, but I think signage is a really good idea. No camping. Uh, it said quiet hours, I think, from eleven to five or whatever. Like, I just think if it's properly documented signs are out, then it's clear, in my opinion.
And councillor.
Yeah, through your uh signage is only as good as the bylaw to back it out. I mean, you can put all the signs you want up there, but if you can't enforce what you're saying on the sign, there's no, there is no sense. And I agree with councillor Carty, uh i- if a police officer stops and you're speeding, you're going eight clicks over the speed limit, he has some discretion there. He's gonna say, you know, I've seen you do this ten times, I'm gonna find you. Or he can say, you know, usually you're a good guy, invited to speed limit, give you a warning. And I see that as the same option for a bylaw enforcement officer to have some discretion and how and when he enforces those bylaws, so.
Okay, me too. Go ahead.
I mean, it's that, I I agree with you that a policy is only as good as your ability to enforce it, and that's the issue I have. We won't be able to enforce th- this. We would be able to enforce something about camping, which is the problem, unless I've missed something that we're trying to address. But if we say no loitering, A, there's, when's when's the, is it, as Mayor Jones pointed out last time, it's a complaint-driven process, not a bylaw enforcement, seeing some guy pondering life and approaching him. Never gonna happen. It's likely not gonna happen that somebody's available to, it's gonna be when somebody puts up a tent or is repeatedly sleeping on a park bench that we're probably gonna like say to our bylaw person, take a drive by the park tomorrow night and if the tent's there, here's the process. So I worry about our capacity to enforce what we're trying to establish. I think will be not possible with a with a fairly broad concept of loiter. So I worry about it. It's just in terms of practicality.
So um I I'm not worried about it. Um, there are, there are often times when when you don't give bylaw or police an authority to do something that they gotta stand there with their hands in their pants and that's not a good feeling. So the loitering, I mean, I I think outside the back of councillor Car's house, he gets a lot of people who probably if bylaw walked through would sit up straight and say, yes, sir, yes, ma'am. Um, but the couple of times that bylaw would say the same ki- people in the same area, that at least we give them the authority to do something. So I, I think there's lots of discretion and it's not the intention to take the the um incredibly um generous person sitting at the Senate tap at midnight and and hassle them. That's not the idea. It is to give some tools to bylaw. So I I've I've seen this lots throughout the province. It doesn't cause me any grief. And of course, anytime that bylaw or police take any action, they'd be accountable for what they do and be able to prove it in court. So if it looks like we have consensus anyway, I'm gonna call the question assigned uh to the CAO. You heard signage, loud and clear. Um, uh, have we got in the proposal what the signage is gonna be or uh, you know, normally I wouldn't ask that question, but it seems that council's really drilled down. Um, it's gonna say no camping. Is there a section and I've just missed it on on what the sign is gonna say again?
No, but there is a timeframe.
Okay.
Eleven to five AM. That would be posted and no camping. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
And what's eleven to five? Quiet?
Uh, the public use hours.
So that's a, that's a nice way of wording it and that'll satisfy, I think, councillor Crapper more.
What, could you clarify?
Public use means are eleven till five.
Now, I'm sorry, through you, Madam Mayor, that's notwithstanding the fact, like you just said, that if someone's walking through the park, we're not gonna, you know, send bylaw to to ticket them or to give them a warning or anything of that nature. Because we're dr- uh complaint driven, it would have to be an ongoing complaint that we receive to follow up on. But um unless council wants any other signage, I think that was the intent of this, to say these are the public use hours. Um, and then we can put a sign that says no loitering or no camping. Um, however, it's not only the camping that has been complained about either. It is the.
It is the kids and and.
Specific, yeah, well, and um transient people who have just been using it at their leisure as they want.
Okay, I opened up a can of worms here. I've got councillor Aragona and councillor Carty.
Yeah, I think uh just to follow up on um the CAO's point about what to put on the sign, maybe we put both, like put no camping, no loitering and that addresses the the concern.
Okay. Okay, councillor.
Uh, I'm just wondering about the light at the basketball um court. Is there any way, like, is it on a timer? Could we shut it off? Cause it's pretty bright, so it gives like kids some access to be there till midnight or later playing basketball, making noise, maybe. Like, you know, I'm just wondering if that's a possibility or not. And I know as a um councillor, I've had a couple constituents complain about how bright that light is uh at nighttime.
So there's two sides to it. It's also crime prevention, having it lit.
Yeah.
Um. On the motion that's on the floor, though.
Yes.
Um, we're gonna call the question, I think. I think we've we've exhausted this. So the the motion on the floor is uh recommend that council pass a bylaws. We'll discuss it again in two weeks to regulate the use of public property, all in favor of that motion. Against? It's carried then. And we will continue the conversation offline about um lighting. Thank you. Alright, uh six point three is the Lockwood Park Playground. It's moved by councillor, I say this sad, I agree, I agree with the motion, but I say it with sadness in my heart. Moved by councillor Aragona, seconded by councillor Carty, that committee the whole received the report of the manager of public works entitled Recreation Lockwood Playground for Information Purposes. And of course, we know that the report talks about its past end of life. It's not safe. It doesn't meet today's standards. And uh they are going to demolish it, but this is the opportunity to make sure you know what's going on, councillor.
Just for clarity, cause I had a call about it, is just the wooden uh pieces that are stuck into the ground. Um, I do wanna point out that playgrounds in the community are, we've got some great playgrounds. I think that um especially in light of our discussion with the delegation around children, reflecting on accessibility to those playgrounds, making sure they are safe and compliant and and that we have a plan for growth. I know, for example, that the playground at public school is locked. And although I've reached out to the former principal there and was uh told that it was at their discretion, we might wanna re- address that with a new principal. Uh, because the people who live by the SO, when I was campaigning for this, approached me to say they were not happy that their kids couldn't walk to the nearest playground. So I think we have some great playgrounds. I do have concerns about whether they are as accessible as they could be in our community and but I on the issue before us, I think we have no choice but to uh. Yeah.
Okay, does the other hand's up in relation to this? Okay, uh.
Just one question. Yeah, it was a, um, one question about, uh, do we know how, you know, following up on councillor Crapper's point about we have great playgrounds, do we know how much this is being used? Do we have any data to tell us that this is a very uh well-used playground or is it?
We have no data. I can tell you anecdotally, it was a lot better used in the beginning before it started to degrade. But we have, we have uh hope that it will be replaced next year with a proper playground.
Alright.
Councillor Carty, councillor Crapper.
I can give you the short version of data. Uh, it's even in the in the snow, it's the swings and what have you and the used every day.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, and uh as we look forward to maybe improving or updating or replacing uh with a night of cost because the nature of the product that people are selling, I tend to think that three quarters of the price is to cover their liability. Uh, I guess nothing to spend a hundred thousand dollars on a minimal playground, minimal amount of playground equipment uh as the schools would attest to. Uh, I know that uh Rita Vista has raised money for for theirs, South Crosby for theirs. Uh the the Catholic school here has a a nice playground, but it was over a hundred thousand bucks. So it's something you have to build incrementally, like a little bit of this and a little bit of that. So definitely there should be a plan moving forward as to as to what we do and when we do it there.
And uh the calls I had three of on this topic were all families who use it a lot.
Okay.
And they misread it, thinking that the whole thing was being removed.
So let's make it clear that we're only talking about the wooden structure.
And that we're talking about revitalizing.
And we're in discussions uh with an organization who would perhaps uh contribute a significant amount to a new one, you know, yet to be flushed out. And the CAO will bring a briefing note. Um, may require some fundraising on our own, but we really, we we don't wanna see a hole in the ground there. But we also understand that there's complaints about the slivers and things like that. Okay, everybody good? Did you, no, let's go. Okay, I'll call the question then. All in favor, Carrie. Okay, six point four, moved by, is this, this is the Westport Trail Loop. I hope Mark Snyder's watching. Moved by councillor Card, seconded by councillor Crapper, that the committee of the whole recommend that council support the efforts of the Westport Tourism Group to include areas within the village in a Westport Loop off the main Rideau Trail. And that committee the whole recommend that council direct staff to support the Westport Tourism Group with guidance on locations and mounting of small trail marker signs within the village. Awesome. Councillor Crapper.
Uh, maybe a conflict of interest, cause I back onto it, but I'm wondering about maybe a lemonade stand or something just behind my house as people come around. Maybe a little bridge over to my place for.
There you go.
Stay in the Airbnb kind of thing, just spitball.
Okay. Uh, go ahead.
So um through you, Madam Mayor, will the village uh logo um be on the signage? Do we know?
Uh, Peter?
Yep, there's, well, these are very, very small, standard triangular marking signs, consistent. I I'm gonna say across the province. Councillor Aragona may be able to provide guidance on that.
Across the world, though. Yeah, okay. Yeah, I've seen them in Europe. Yeah. Okay, all good? Yay, well done, team. All in favor, Carrie. Second, okay, six point five, oh, no, uh, six point five vehicle data collection. That was the addition, right?
Yep.
Okay, and then we've got the other one. Yeah. Pardon me, moved by councillor Crapper, seconded by councillor Card, that the committee the whole received the report entitled Public Works Vehicle Data Collection and Speed Signs for Information Purposes. Excuse me. So this is convolutive. Started by a government grant opportunity to cover potholes. And we are eligible, but it is uh backward. It's not into twenty six, it's to help cover some of the money that we already have spent on potholes. We're eligible. And at the same time, these vehicle data collection and speed signs are something that have been um on the list uh that we desire to get for the village. So it's not as much a point of of finance for you. It was the manager of public works wanting you to know that he's going to arrange, he's gonna buy these things. So when they go up, you'll understand the background to it, is it not only helps caution speed, but it also gives us the the data. And maybe just talk about the data a bit, Peter, and how you use that.
Yeah, so there's, so the primary usage for this data is for um classifying road networks for maintenance standards. The also very important use of the data is prioritizing reconstruction and repairs and maintenance based on more well-traveled roads and speeds therein. Um, so these are common systems. We actually, there was, there's already one installed in the village on Main Street, it's the same idea. And uh one in Newborough for a time there.
Yeah.
But the uh the data itself is very valuable. Last time I collected this data was twenty twenty three. Um, we typically grab that every three to five years. So twenty twenty six would be the starting of that piece. Um, with the kind of the growth in the village, we would expect to see some changing traffic counts and things like that. We don't expect major traffic, um major reclassifications of roadways, but it is something that we wanna, we've always wanted to keep an eye on.
Yeah, and particularly um while we continue down the course to go to single tier and the county roads become our roads.
Go ahead. Um, can you speak to where the location of these data collection will be? Yeah, go ahead.
There's, the one of the best parts is that they're completely mobile. So if we get complaints, we can target them in certain areas. If we think there's speeding, we can target those areas and then refer that to O P P. Um, but yeah, they're they're mobile.
Go ahead.
The one on Main Street's been there for some time, is it? Uh, would we get an upgrade for it with, or is it mobile to begin with? And I don't think so. If not.
Coming down the hill?
Yeah.
So there's, um, it's it's mobile and it'll be in the same mobile in the same sense we are. It doesn't take much to move that around. Um, that's a county program. I don't have any real information about that, to be honest, but the uh, so it could be moved if they decide it at some point. I'm I'm not aware of the data it collects. If it does collect the data, these ones would.
Okay.
Slow people down. Go ahead.
Through your worship, so there's no uh owner-specific data. It's just, it's just this car went through it. Does it differentiate between commercial traffic and and uh, you know, personal vehicles, that kind of thing? And second question, would that data be of any use to a group as like uh Act Dev?
Go ahead.
Uh, so through your ship, um, I believe so. I have that question in. Um, the ones that I've worked with in the past all was it, were able to differentiate between commercial traffic and light vehicle traffic. So I had assumed, but the um, as far as the data being useful to Act Dev, I mean, not maybe my ballpark, but if Act Dev knew that two thousand cars a day went by this site, they could perhaps use that in marketing. If they knew that fifty went through the site, maybe that's not the spot for signing a job or something. But so guesstimating what they might use it for, yeah. It's probably, it's a, it's a public data.
Public data, okay.
Councillor.
Good. Alright, then I'm gonna call the question. All in favor, Carrie. All right, then I'm going to call the question. All in favor. Carrie. Okay, so the next is six point six is, uh, in relation to the, um, Treasury twenty twenty five loans maturity. Let's move by Counselor Card, seconded by Counselor Crapper, that the Committee of the Whole receives the report entitled Treasury twenty twenty five loans maturity. And that the Committee of the Whole recommends that council approve a one-year term renewal with R B C for the L S S D S loan in the amount of two hundred and sixty nine thousand, four hundred and ninety five dollars and fifteen cents. And that the Committee of the Whole recommend that council direct staff to analyze and secure the best option for renewal when the two BMO loans mature and report back to council at the twenty twenty six budget deliberations. So those loans mature in December, I thought. C A O.
Yeah, thank you through you, Madam Mayor. They mature December thirty first of this year, but you're able to renew into the middle of January.
So let me word the question a different way, because the BMO branch is closing in the village and like everybody else, we will look at what makes the most sense to us. Can we put off signing the extension on those loans without uh, without jeopardy if we go into January?
Thank you through you, Madam Mayor. That's exactly what I'm seeking for the two that are maturing at the end of December. I'm not looking for a commitment as to, uh, which loan. I'm looking for, uh, approval for staff to secure the best interest rate. What has to be renewed is the R B C.
Yes, I read that wrong.
D S loan. I'm sorry, because that one's already matured and it, uh, had to have been decided on November fifteenth. Prelimarily, we decided on a one-year term, subject to council's approval and acceptance.
Okay, I'm sorry. I meant, didn't mean muddy water. Everybody else is clear on what this says. It's just the mayor that wasn't.
Yeah, the R B C.
Go ahead, Mary.
Quick question, uh, on the water sewer treatment loan, uh, I don't have my notes here, not the numbers, but it looked to me like we've only paid seventeen K of a hundred and thirty five in ten years. You know, you might not be able to answer that right now, but I'm interested because that's significantly different than what we paid on the other loans that were described.
Yeah, thank you through you, Madam Mayor. I don't know this for certain and I'll find that answer out before the next meeting, but I do believe there were two, uh, separate loans that were originally taken out at the beginning of the project, but then they were amalgamated. So that's that amount for the re-amalgamated, uh, total. Unless you have any more insight, I don't think.
I believe that was.
Yeah.
Seemed like an anomaly or.
I'll confirm for you before council though.
Okay. All right, then I'll call the question. All in favor? Carrie. Okay, and so now we're at emotions and resolutions. You weren't here when we, um, were signing, so with Counselor Crapper's.
That's my great idea.
It's a separate idea. Have Counselor Cardy move that. Um, so moved by Counselor Cardy, seconded by Counselor Card, whereas the Rito District Museum's name was derived from the Rito District Historical Society at the time. And whereas there's been no financial contributions from Rito Lakesport area. And whereas the Village of Westport has continuously supported the museum and the Historical Advisory Committee, now therefore be it resolved that the Committee of the Whole recommends that council approve the request from the Historical Advisory Committee to change the name of the museum from the Rito District Museum to the Westport Museum. Correct. Any discussion? Uh, Counselor Crapper, then Counselor Crapper.
A benefit, side benefit might be new signage. Is that part of the thinking that there could be a nice new bright sign for our museum?
We haven't even discussed that yet. Just the name change. It's, it has been changed on, uh, Facebook as well. Uh, it also says formular, but that would be.
Yeah, rebranding is always a little bit of a bonus.
Yeah, yeah, good point. Counselor Cardy.
I could never understand the, the naming of it. I think it should have always been the Westport Museum. Westport puts in the money and the effort. I think that's only the way it should be.
There we go. And I'm going to call the question. All in favor? Carrie. Okay, any correspondence? Any notices of motion? Any announcements?
Uh, did you call it? Yeah. The library had an open house event today. It was fantastic, a really well-attended, uh, sort of a Christmas annual tradition. Uh, it also coincided with Pam's, uh, forty years of service here. And I just wanted to, uh, re- re- reiterate that forty years of service at our little public library by a single person who's so widely known and regarded, highly regarded as Pam is very special. So, uh, I think it might be something we could consider to, uh, how we might celebrate Pam ourselves. And, uh, it's not a notice of motion, but something I'm just floating by us that maybe we could consider, uh, something to Pam, uh, from council to commemorate her forty years.
Very good. And your board won't get upset?
Board? No. No, board upset?
Yeah. Okay. Uh, well, we'll talk about it and, uh, come up with an idea. Why don't you come up with an idea and ask us to pitch in?
Yeah, no, I will do some thinking.
Okay.
I had one other, uh, query. Tell me if it doesn't fit, but, uh, I'd like to have some discussion at some point about our C V A. Just like we were talking about with the health unit. And I know Counsel Aragona is our rep there, but perhaps in a, uh, in an upcoming meeting, we could be briefed on that. And I think as a community, we might want to submit some, uh, views as we have the opportunity.
We have a little bit more. We're heading to a meeting Friday in Ottawa and, um, not, not a lot on the agenda yet, but we'll, uh, note it's for Eastern Ontario, so we'll get a better idea and and if it makes sense, maybe we could squeeze a piece of the council meeting coming up and provide an update. There's, there's not a lot of information in the public domain yet. We hope to get some Friday.
I know there's some correspondence coming to the C A O if it hasn't already arrived from our V C A regarding, um, suggestions for maybe, um, uh, information and motion to council for a letter to the, the minister. So I'm not sure if you got that yet, but it is coming, if you didn't get it.
Good. Um, and do I announce, anybody else an announcement?
Chris? Yeah, sorry, just wanted to announce, we're in the middle with, at the arena of about five hockey tournaments in a row over five weekends. And this weekend coming up is, uh, we're part of the hosting group that does the Cub Town Tournament out of Smith Falls. So it's, it's a huge tournament. It's all across, I think, five, six different rinks in the region. And we're going to be busy like all day Friday, all day Saturday, half the day Sunday. So all these tournaments bring so many people and their families to Westport. Um, I'm sure the, you know, the downtown area has, has seen that over the last number of weekends. And this weekend is our biggest weekend of the entire, uh, arena season, basically. So you would expect to see a lot of people around town this weekend.
Well, that's great. Yeah, congratulations for sure.
Yeah.
You need any help? I don't.
Be careful. Is that a burger?
The only announcement I have is, uh, what we've, we've kind of talked about offline there. Uh, to get a consensus that our New Year's levy will be a skating levy this year and we'll host upstairs in the canteen and have, um, a couple of hours of free skate. Uh, we're thinking the rec manager is going to find us between eleven and one on New Year's Day. Um, the arena is opening special for our levies, so we invite everybody in the village who wants to get a free free skating in on New Year's Day to come and see us and pop upstairs and have a, a snack with us as well for, to celebrate the New Year's.
Uh, I know we can now sell beer up there. Would that be a possibility at this event?
We can't sell beer, so the, the beer that will be sold upstairs will be by a group, uh, part of a special occasion permit.
Right.
So it's not a bar. It will be a special occasion permit.
Just thought I'd ask.
To the table.
You can bring your own, yeah.
No, oh, don't. Questions from the public or from the media?
None, none from the public.
Okay. No, sorry, you're here. I forgot. I could go over here. Okay, that's us team. Then we're going to adjourn at, uh, by moved by Counselor Card, seconded by Counselor Crapper. But this meeting of the Committee of the Whole, the Village of Westport.